We discussed in our pre-meeting conference. Can we sum up our conversations? And I will start momentarily.
All right, council. The first piece of legislation is propose ordinance to, um, uh, we have to rescind the earlier one. I just got off the phone with the chief, Chief Fingersaw, and the one dated, uh, the one with the 124 compliment, we just got to, we have to reconsider it and have the date changed to June 1st.
So where it says June 1st, 2023, that's good.
That's good.
Okay.
It has to be before we hit two ordinances enacted the same day, Joseph.
What's your, oh, okay. Nice to meet you.
Right.
It'll be 132.
Yes, the 132 is going to stay at July 1st, but we have to have an ordinance before. Two ordinances the same day is illegal. Okay? Any questions? All right, let's move to the next piece. Our next piece is a authorizing wine and beer, FX Brewery, the Boiler America Party, Sunday, July 9th. Any discussion? Discussion is closed for resolution number two. Resolution number three, also the sale of wine, I'm sorry, wine and beer, FX Brewery, and it's Saturday, June 24th. Any discussions? Discussion is closed. Next is a proposed ordinance number four, FX Brewery, collective soul concert, August 18th. Oh, day after my birthday. Any discussions? Discussion is closed. FX Brewery, the Mo concert, Friday, June 9th. Any discussions? Discussion is closed. Next piece of legislation is of course buying a wine and beer, FX Brewery, Saturday, August 19th. Oh, two of them. Any discussions? Discussion is closed. Our next piece is the sale of some urban renewal agency property. This is sponsored by Councilman Burmaster. It's for the sale of 1,006 Wagner Street. Councilman Burmaster, are you in favor of the sale?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. The priest, the next piece of legislation has to be referred to committee. It's actually the sale of the property. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Iello. It's calling for the public hearing for the sale of 637 Plant Street. Councilwoman Iello, are you in favor of the sale?
I am.
Okay. The next piece of legislation is resolution number nine, I'm sorry, ordinance number nine has to be referred to committee.
Is it ordinance number 10?
I'm sorry, ordinance number 10, yes, thank you. Next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Irving, calling for the public hearing, the sale of 1215 Millet Street. Councilman Irving, are you in favor of the sale, sir?
Yeah, I'm good.
The next piece of legislation, ordinance number 12, for the sale of that property, we need to refer to committee. The bond ordinance is number 13. I like to skip that to the last piece so we can discuss it. Can we put that to the side momentarily? And we're on the Board of E and A Transfer, ordinance number four. Let's see, we have, oh, excellent.
Yes, so ordinance number 14, this has to do with our fire line. So this is a transfer to cover some overtime, most especially contractual services, food. As you might be aware, we have academies. We had quite an attendance this year of our two academies that we did hold. We get this reimbursed, the food, but it is a budgetary amount, so we actually see more revenues and then just some price overages on our gas. I don't know if you have any questions on this?
Any discussions on this transfer? Ordinance number 14.
I noticed 22, 23.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it's 22, 23. Yep.
All good. Discussion is closed. Let's move to the next piece.
Um, ordinance number 15 has to do with our parks maintenance. Once again, this is all coming out of the same cost centers. Um, we had a few more seasonal employees and some repairs for our lawnmowers. We've been struggling being able to hire for our Parks Department, which we did last year. We don't really want to use seasonal employees, but that seems to be what we're getting, and we're constantly advertising. Uh, we did fill a couple positions over the past couple of weeks, so hopefully we won't be leaning on seasonals as much as we did this year.
So this is just in the parks?
Yep.
Any additional discussions on ordinance number 15? Discussion is closed. Can we move to ordinance number 16?
Yes. Uh, this is basically a cleanup for street cleaning. Um, we, uh, we had a contract settlement for our DPW this past year, um, and we also have this movement between our sewer fund and our street cleaning wages and out of our general fund, so we occasionally have, um, some issues there as it relates to people moving back and forth. We had a significantly, uh, more overtime than we're used to having. A lot of that had to do with some of the street paving that we did last year, um, and some of the pothole replacements, um, and, um, and then just that 15,000 is for additional salt.
It stated here, purchase of a V blade. I'm assuming that's a plow blade, correct?
Yes, yes, yep.
Any additional discussion? Discussion is closed. Can we move to ordinance number 17, please?
Yes, this has to do with our DPW garage. The majority of this, well, about half of it came out of, um, our city hall and account and controller account, but this again was for the contract settlement, um, for wages. Um, we, our central garage, even though we did some capital repairs, and I'll be coming back to you shortly on that because we have some overages there, but we had a significant amount of repairs that needed to be done at, at the garage and, and on our equipment. And we had a, an F1, F350 that was, it was one of our own trucks, one of our own employees was in an accident, caused quite a bit of damage to the truck. Um, we did get the insurance, um, but we needed to increase the repair line.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to what we talked about in one part about the salt.
Yes.
So I was under the impression that with the light winter we had this year, we had an abundance of salt leftovers, so why did we have to borrow more money to buy salt?
It probably dealt with the timing of when the salt came in. We, we also had a problem that we had to buy salts because we had a contract for salt. We, we have to buy a minimum amount, um, and so Dave went ahead and filled up our barn, so we have it for next year.
So do we have a good sense of like how far ahead we are on salt? Like will next year we, it's a good question.
Well, I was told that we didn't use half the salt that we budgeted for.
We.
So, can I comment?
Sure.
There was a storm late in season, and legitimately I did ask, you know, what's going on, plows versus salt, et cetera, and they used an inordinate amount of salt through that storm, and that is exactly why this transfer is referencing salt.
Discussion is closed. Let's move to the next piece. You're all set with 17? Okay, discussion is closed on 17. We're on number 18 now. This is a authorizing the sale of wine and beer. It's St. Anthony's and St. Ignace Church. It's for St. Anthony's Festival. Any discussions? Discussion is closed on or, resolution number 18. Um, we do have a proclamation honoring Father Joseph Salerno. Is the full council like to sponsor?
Yes.
Yes.
Father Joe Salerno got first ordained. I was his first altar boy when he was at down in Mount Carmel.
He was an altar boy.
Can you believe that?
Not, no.
No, I can't.
I tried. I don't believe any of it.
I look, I can't believe, I got pictures. Um, okay, let's get back to the bond ordinance, ordinance number 13. Heather, you have the floor.
Okay, a couple of things. Um, Councilperson Testa requested a bond schedule. Bond schedules, which I, my understanding was the clerk's office did deliver to the council, is not a good indication whatsoever of where we are sitting with debt. Um, that's long-term debt. That's not your band schedule. And when you take a look at this schedule, you can see very clearly, um, if you don't add the bands in and you don't add your leases in, you don't have a clear indication of what your debt, your long-term debt is. Um, ban is simply a term for a bond anticipation note, which just simply means you can wait up to five years, uh, to turn your short-term debt into long-term debt. Um, so what's expected without any new issuances at this point, before we talk about the, the capital plan, is that at the end of '24, we'll have 19.7 million in bands, 32 million in serial bonds, and 2 million in capital leases, bringing us to 53. So I've included a couple of other years here to kind of show you that, you know, um, debt kind of goes up and goes down. Um, one of the other things, and we've talked about this in the past, tonight we're asking for a bond ordinance. That means you're giving your approval to us to go out and do certain capital projects. That does not mean that we will be borrowing that money tomorrow. Does not mean we'll be borrowing the money in a month. Um, one of the techniques that we employed during COVID was we actually held off, you had, you had twice, actually, you had approved capital plans, and we held them off from borrowing for a year because we could. Um, and that's a way to, to do a couple of things. Pay off some debt, right, without adding new debt to the, to the schedule, um, and also bypassing interest costs. So it's our anticipation that we would not actually borrow this money, um, until January. We have two issuances right now, January and April. And what does that do? That then holds off the principal payments for another year, um, or a ban, you actually can hold off, um, principal payments for two years and only pay interest.
Yeah, we apply for the ban. You lock in the interest rate at that point?
For that year.
For the, just that year?
Yes.
If you extend it past that year?
It's a new interest rate. We advertise it again.
And can you discuss how much interest rates have gone up in the last year or two?
And will continue to go up.
Right, yeah.
Um, they have.
I'm sorry, Joseph, because we're.
It, it often depends on how much debt you're issuing and what your bond rating is, right? As you may recall, about a month and a half ago, we announced that we actually had an increased bond rating.
Right.
So that helps us overall when it comes to our interests. We're, we're deemed a better risk than some of the other governments out there. Um, so it all depends how long you're going out to borrow. So right now, you're anywhere between two and a half, maybe four and a half, depending on all those factors.
I mean, one of the things that I take into, or I have taken into consideration in the past when voting on these is, okay, we've got a really low rate. And so if, if the day that I'm voting on it, we've got a really low rate, but you don't borrow on it until a year later, and I understand your reasons for doing it that way, but then in fact, you're, you might be borrowing on it at a, at a significantly higher rate.
Right.
Right? So which is not what I voted for. I voted to, I, I guess.
Or a significantly lower rate.
Or a significantly lower, although it would have been harder to get much lower than the interest rates that we were all enjoying when we first, when I first joined the council.
And plus she just stated, we don't know the amount that she's going to have to borrow.
Right.
It's not, it's not going to be over what we're stating here.
Right.
It may even be under.
It can't be over.
Correct. Joseph, I'm sorry, you got the floor.
So Heather, can you tell me, so this is for 2023, and you gave us the same, we've gone through this every year, that basically it's like a line of credit. We don't have to use it. We're putting it out there. So can you tell me what we did, we, what we borrowed in 2021 and in 2022, and what we used?
We, we used all of it.
So when you told us, just like you're telling us now, we want to borrow 9 million, but we're probably not going to need to use it, okay, in the last two years, basically said, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just being curious, okay?
No, I have an example for you once you're done.
Yeah, but you've told us the same thing.
Yep.
That we use the line of credit.
Yep.
Analogy.
Yep.
And we're going to borrow it, but we necessarily might not use it.
So I'll give you a great example. Um, two years ago, you gave the authorization to borrow, I want to say, $2 million for Kennedy Garage repairs. We didn't borrow it. We didn't borrow it until last month, okay, because we knew, we, we thought we might sell it, right? And so we, we borrowed the money in April, two years later, um, because there's repairs that need to be done. As it relates to the sale of the property, that's not for me to talk about, um, but at this moment, we have a public safety concern with our parking garage. There are holes, you could just look out the window and you can see them. So repairs need to be made. So we went ahead in April and borrowed that money from two years ago when you gave us the authorization.
Okay, so what about last year? Where's that money from last year?
Oh, we borrowed it all. We didn't borrow it right away.
Well, am I wrong in just saying, when you presented this to us?
Yes.
What did, how did you present it? Just the way you presented it now? You want 9 million, but we might not use it.
Well, I don't think I said we might not use it. What I said was, we might not borrow it all right now, and we didn't need it right now, so we didn't borrow it.
You won't borrow it until you're ready to spend it.
That's right.
So, I got it.
Yep.
So how come we're not waiting until the next administration comes in? I mean, why aren't we doing this now?
Well, because we need to pave roads, okay? And we haven't really gotten into this, and we can get into this. If you look under fire, right now, an area ladder takes up to two years from the day that you order it. It takes up to 28 months to actually get it. We ordered a fire truck a year and a half ago out of ARPA. We still don't have it. We ordered an ambulance, I believe a remount, out of ARPA. I can't, the right jargon. We still don't have it. The engine, for a million dollars, is 40 months out.
Is that because we're behind because of COVID and everything else?
It's because what they're doing right now, even with our Mac, with all our, our plows, we ordered four plows a year and a half ago. We're going to be lucky if we get them this fall.
Same thing with new cars.
Yeah, so, I mean, do you know right now, if, if we wanted a car for our police department, we'd have, we'd struggle to get one? Which, by the way, we're about six behind, they're in six, five or six are on order.
So.
Because Ford is only opening up once a year to order cars.
Yes.
And right now, that's October.
Is that because of the, what happened over with the COVID over the last couple of years?
So they're only, yeah, so, so they're only got so many people working that line, and they're not going up and down. They're working that line. So you just put the orders in, they're keeping, they're, they're keeping their workforce as stable. They're not adding people so that it goes up, they're just not doing it. And, and that's the same for snow plows and fire engines and cars. And that's why all you have to do is go to commercial drive, and there are no new cars there.
They have a lot of new cars there now.
Well, I was up at Steve yesterday, and they weren't there.
It's up pretty good the last few months. So if that is the case, I'm sorry, I might speak out of turn. Okay, so if that's the case, that we're not going to get all this stuff, we got a new administration coming in, we got fire truck that's already out, we got, we bought two electric cars that the, the brand is discontinued, why are we doing all this right now? Why don't we just wait? We have, on top of that, I'm not saying.
If you'd like to wait another eight months, eight months to order.
Okay, but I'm not saying just all of it, but 9 million to me seems like a pretty high amount. And on top of that, on top of that, I have a real hard time knowing that this city got $60 million this year, and we're borrowing money for stuff, you know, and I, and I get it. It's not that it's wrong, it just doesn't sit well with me. It does not sit well that we're going out and borrowing when we had a once-in-a-lifetime cer, um, amount given to the city.
But I.
And I know we put it in our parks, I know we did all this stuff. Let me ask you this question, if I'm going to go on a tangent. Let me ask you this question. We have parks, I get calls every day, I feel like I'm a pain in the neck to Marcus, to everybody else, about grass being cut, this being cut. We spent all this money in our parks, and they're beautiful. They, I seen Frankie on TV yesterday, the park at Proctor Park is beautiful. Who's going to maintain those? We can't maintain what we have now. Are we having anything in this capital project to put maybe two people on that their whole job is to take care of the parks?
That, that is not what comes out of borrowing. That's operational and maintenance.
Okay.
Okay, but that doesn't, that's not what comes out of it. But I want to get back to your point on ARPA, okay? We, sometimes we forget, we did 4 million in paving. We, we've done 2 million for the fire department. We've done a variety of all our ta, new tasers for our police department, and, and our cameras, and our, and our vests.
The gears, the leathers, yes.
Right. I mean, we, we, we did, I think, a million dollars in, in HVAC for our police department and for our fire department. So to suggest that none of ARPA money was used on city facilities is not true.
I did not suggest that at all.
But the ARPA money was not given to us to, 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 to supplant what we are supposed to do as a government, okay? It was to supplement.
Absolutely, and I didn't suggest that. I'm telling you, me sitting at this desk right here, I have a hard time trying to borrow 9 million dollars when the city was given 60 million dollars.
I understand.
That's all I'm trying to say.
Yes.
And, and you know what? The people I represent, and the people all of you guys represent, I'm sure feel the same way. That's all I got to say. I'm not saying who's right or wrong, I'm just telling you that I have a hard time with that.
But our, but our police officers still have to have cars to get where they have to go, and our fire department still needs fire trucks, and they need to be ordered. And if they're not ordered, you can wait another six, eight months, 10 months, the price is going to go up. We will not be able to lock in.
Oh, they are going up, I'll tell you that right now.
Well, everything moves up, but as far as seeing the case.
Courtney, look at it.
There are, the country drives low rate now for cars.
Um, Joey, you're all set? I'll give the president the floor.
Yes.
I just, I do want to address something that Councilwoman Feeder said, and it's been alluded to. And I'm not speaking for or against this as far as the council's concerned, but, um, with the orders for fire trucks, and actually now that Chief Fingersaw is here, he can also attest to this, uh, depending on how the administration is going to execute the orders of the trucks, and we've done this in the past, we've walked away from hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, because we wait two months to order a truck. The same thing happens with the plows and some of the larger equipment or apparatus for the other departments as well. The other thing to address something that Councilwoman Williamson was saying, it's not just the lines and the amount of employees building cars, et cetera. Every single city across America received ARPA money, and everyone is ordering trucks, and everyone is ordering cars. So there's a huge demand right now because of an influx of government money. So those are the things, you know, based on what was going on around the conversation, I just wanted to highlight those things because we didn't really, uh, you know, give a concise discussion on that. Sometimes if we wait, we do waste money, uh, but ultimately it's up to the administration once this is done and how it's executed.
Is there any other, um, the only thing I can like to add, the ARPA money that we used, Joey, it was used for different items outside this capital plan. These items on this capital plan, okay, is a must. The chief just told you, that ladder truck, the, um, other items like the police equipment, the fire, the fire, uh, equipment, uh, the cruisers for the police department, the traffic signals, these are all items. They're not, they're not, you know, something pleasurable. They're all items that are needed. Snow plows, a salter with a snow plow. I mean, DPW is going to need it. Engineering department, Stephanie, she needs this to continue the work to subsidize any type of sewer problems that she's working on. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
You know what, I'm sorry. I've sat here, this is my fourth year, I've supported the police, the fire, the DPW. I will support them until the day I'm not in the seat. I'm not questioning that we need them. What I'm questioning is, we had 60 million dollars. Look in advance, you got smart people up there. You knew you were going to have to borrow money. So before we spent, like, did all this stuff that we did, and it's good stuff, maybe we spent 53 million instead of 60, and we wouldn't have had to borrow now. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying I'm against borrowing it, I just want to question it. We're also going to question Heather. I, I've already talked to Mary Ann Button Shot. We got another $700,000 in that state funding grant for the paving, correct?
Yes, for, only for Crokerma Road, and I think a little bit of Leland, yes.
Not Leland, the other part, the top part by Foodland, that is, is part of it. Okay, but what do we, what do you do with the rest of that? You can't spend it, no place else?
Can't spend it anywhere else.
State, state road.
Okay.
Okay, I, I do, I do, I do have Austin taking a look at, um, if we can do lights or whatever else.
In that area.
In that area, whatever else it can be used for.
Curves, okay.
Yeah, so he's looking at that right now.
No, I just wanted to make sure on that, but I'm not, listen, anybody who's listening to me here, I'm not against this, I'm just telling you, to me, I have a hard time with it. I, I got a hard time. And I really think that before we just put this out, because we have, you know, we have the votes to pass it, I think it should go into committee, and we should have a meeting and break it down, because that's what I think we should do. But you guys do whatever you want.
Well, if, this is an ordinance, council members, and I don't want to waste any more of our time here, or, or, or our engineering's time, or our budget director's time. If it's not unanimous, of course, it's not going to go. And go ahead, Frankie, you bring it.
I, I just want to go over a couple of things. I know you sent something out via email, and the amount, I think our debt schedule or something is 41 million. Was that on the email the other day, and our payment was 5 million?
Yeah, I, I, that came, as I mentioned before, so when Councilperson Testa asked for something, she got what she asked for. That is not a good indication of what your debt is. That is not a good indication of what your debt is. Like, that's why I supply this every year. Every year, I go through the same thing, okay?
Okay, so that disregards what we saw, because I thought our...
Yes, that was actually, and we, we went from a ban to a bond about three weeks ago. So those debt schedules that you got were old.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I was looking at it, it was five point, let's say, 3 million. Next year would be another $5.3 million payment towards your bonds. That would go down to four, and it would go down to three. That was nice $2 million savings there.
But then we did, but then we had a ban that turned to a bond. That's where that 14, that 14 million under the bond issuance comes, and that's not on that schedule.
All right, so let me ask you a question. If we borrowed the whole $9 million tomorrow, signed up for it, we're gonna do it. What's our payment? What's our payment for how long, for the $9 million? Do you, you know offhand?
I don't, I don't, because every item that's listed here has what they call a different useful life, and the debt payment is over that useful life. Like a police car.
But it varies, was it five years, 10 years, 20?
It never goes, it never goes, it never goes up, it always comes down.
Did you hear what she just said?
Go ahead.
That means you're taking out a loan for over the useful life of the items.
I understand that, but if they're, if, if you're gonna borrow money, let's say, the whole thing, 9 million. So the police cars are, maybe we can get five years out of them.
If we're lucky, yes.
That's a useful life.
But that payment is only gonna stop at five years? That'll come off, that'll come off the payment? The next payment, 10 years?
Yes.
It has, can't go over the useful life.
All right, but, but the total, if we borrowed the $9 million, what would be the total payment per year? I, it's all I ask.
Oh, I, I can get that schedule.
You know, I just wanted to find out what it would be. Is it 250,000, is it 500? I have no idea. I don't know what our interest rate is either.
Well, so, so, that goes to, that begs the question. This is a ban, and a ban, okay, ban, but the difference between a ban and a bond, the first two years, if you want, we haven't done it, but we did it years ago when we were broke here, we only paid interest the first two years. So we, we got, we, we got some, it released some ability for us to have to pay back the principal for two years. You can put it to a bond whenever you want, if the rates are low. So it's constantly evolving, constantly evolving. I, I get your concern, Councilman. You don't want those debt expense to go up and spike. That's been something I've talked about for four or five years. That's the last thing you want, right? Because that fools around with your budget, right? Or you're expecting this to be, and then all of a sudden, your, your debt goes up, right? It did this year, i- in your 23, 24 budget. Your ban payment was huge compared to the previous year, right? And that's based on useful life. So, you know, I worked pretty hard at trying to, trying to make sure, if you look at the past two years, right, 50, 5.9 million to 5.85 million, you know, I try to keep it balanced and level. And that's all part of what fiscal advisors does for us.
And the guidelines for useful life come from the state.
Yes.
I just wanna address this very, because there's sort of a general question here that is, that is being implied by these questions. And it's about the idea of like, sort of debt is bad. And I, I think we all sort of, on some intuitive sense, we understand that like, personal debt at home is bad, right? I worked hard to pay off my mortgage, so I don't have debt. But the reason that I don't wanna have personal debt is because I'm gonna die someday, and I don't wanna die in debt. But the city's never gonna die. So like, that intuition that we have, that debt is something that we should try to avoid and get it as small as possible, and pay off all our loans, I think doesn't, it doesn't compute from an, from an individual, where we get that intuition, to, to the life of a city, which we're a perpetual motion machine. The other reason I think that, and I, obviously, I think that we could get into a situation where we have too much debt, but I don't think we're anywhere close to that. And I, I believe that this, like, we're, our fiscal stress now is zero, as judged by the state comptroller, despite the debt that we have. The other reason that it makes a lot of sense to me to have debt is that I don't think that the people who live in the city right now should pay themselves for the things that the people who move here next year are gonna use too. I want them to pay for it. And the, the way in which we get future citizens and future taxpayers to pay for the things that they're gonna use is by paying for them over time, by borrowing for them. Does that make sense? Right, so let's just take a police car, which is gonna last for five years. Those tax, we now shouldn't pay for that. We and everybody over the next five years should pay for that. And that includes the people who buy a house and start paying property taxes. So I think, I think debt as a general matter for a city is not something that we ought to work hard to avoid in the same way that me and my personal life, I ought to avoid credit card debt. Or, you know, I paid, like I said, I paid off my mortgage when I could.
One minute, Mark's first, Mark?
So, I remember when we first started here years ago, and we were paying for vehicles we didn't have anymore. In other words, you were paying for ambulances that are out of commission for five years, and we're still paying on them. Is that still happening? Because of the stuff you ordered five years ago, six years ago? I mean, is this stuff taken off, or are we, I mean, what's the life of an ambulance?
Right, so...
It took us like 20 years, I mean, it was gone, but we're still paying on it, right?
Yeah, and, and we were, and, and, and the chief may be able to answer that better than I can, but all I can tell you, the good news is, is our, our, our asset inventory is getting newer. Right, newer plows. You know, this time, seven or eight years ago, you didn't have any new plows in like a decade. You know, so your, your, your fleet is, is renewing a little bit quicker, just like your roads are getting done a little bit better, a little bit quicker, right? And that's a good thing, right? That brings up the whole culture of the whole city. I don't know, Chief, if you, I don't, you, I don't know that you would actually know the answer, though.
It's just like the police, I mean, it's just like anything that we, we pay for, but it's like your story of buying a car with this liability, and you're still paying on it. You know, even though you don't have it anymore.
So, right now, we have an, in our fleet, right now, we have a 1994, a 1996, two 2001s. So we find ourselves using the 2001s in the 94 quite often, more often than I'm comfortable with, and we're all familiar with how corrosion is affecting everything. So the 2001s, I've really seen end of their useful life. They really, you know, we do what we can to milk as much time out of these apparatuses as possible. Most of our apparatuses are gonna be 20-year apparatuses. That's why we just send in these other, the 2011s out for refurbishment to try to prolong the useful life of them. Now, we missed an opportunity with the 2001s 10 years ago or 12 years ago because they, they weren't sent out for refurbishment. So they really haven't had, other than things breaking, they haven't had anything done.
If you turn to the page three of this bond ordinance, it has the, the, the useful life listed. So for firefighting vehicles and apparatus, it lists 20, 20 years. Building alterations, 10.
Marcus would like to say something. Mark, Marcus, I'm sorry.
No, just so, and, and I'm not implying that this is what you were saying, Councilman, but when you're talking about the ARPA, I just don't want you guys to think, to forget the fact that some of these are public facilities. So you're talking about the playground in Proctor Park, right? The old playground was past its useful life. That's gonna come down. We were gonna put a playground in Proctor Park regardless of ARPA. You look at Varick Street, those trees were all dying. We were gonna have to replace the trees and put in permeable pavers. Bertolini Clubhouse is another one we get. Bertolini Clubhouse was gonna have to take an investment. So I don't want you to think we didn't think of it. You know, even some of the items that people think are sort of castaways, like a splash pad. Gets really hot in the summer, we need to establish cool zones, and we've had times where our pools weren't working. And we bonded to take care of our pools again, and still need to bond more, right? Bathhouses, right? So all I'm saying is that I don't want you guys as a council to think that we weren't thinking about the long-term financial health of the city. Some of these things are city facilities. Most of them are, so.
So you're basically saying, if you didn't do it with the ARPA money, you'd be coming to us on...
You'd have to premissed the money for those?
Yes, yes.
So I just wanna carry on with Mark's question. So of all the debt we have now, what's the oldest?
Hmm, um...
Well, that's gonna be hard, you don't have it.
I don't have it in front of me. Um, probably early teens, probably 12, 13, somewhere in that.
Okay, so let's just say, for the sake of argument, 10, 10 years old. So the oldest debt we have is 10 years old.
It may be 20 years, it may be 20 years. So, so like, if you look in that page three, a sewer system is 40 years. So we could have a bond for 40 years if it deals with our sewer.
That's because Stephanie fixes them so well.
I guess, I mean, again, I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable with borrowing as much. I think that the debt that the city has is not, I don't worry about it for all the reasons that I stated before. But I guess, and maybe this would be a really hard thing to chase down in a, in a schedule or in a spreadsheet. I'd love to know, I'd love to know exactly how much debt we have for everything that we borrowed it for. And, and, and that's, and of course, a lot of that money, 10 years ago, wasn't your responsibility. You know, budget directors change, and so there's no single person tracking it all in a single database or a spreadsheet or what have you, so...
But what I can do, what I can do, which might be a fun activity, is go back to the, the oldest debt we still have out there and find out, we can pull the public offering statement, and I can tell you what was purchased under that bond.
No, that's exactly what I would love to know. And you think it might be a fun activity?
I do.
I'm pretty sure Councilwoman ALO is like, "Ooh, that sounds great." Right, data nerds, both of you, which I appreciate very much. I would love to know that. Because I think that would be really useful to the council to know in terms of, and that answers, Councilwoman...
I probably could do all the outstanding, the outstanding bonds.
Right, Councilman, but that answers, doesn't that answer your question, Councilwoman Williamson?
Yeah, I can make that, I can do that for you.
I'd love that. All right, but the... Super. So we can get that by next meeting?
Yeah, of course.
So, let me ask you this question. How important is this to get passed tonight? Is it a problem if we have a meeting to really go over a little detail and then pass it? Even if we have, even if we have a meeting next week before? Or is it imperative this has gotta get passed tonight?
Well, we've started our street paving program. And that's part of, that's number one. Number two, prices are about to go up on the fire, on the, on the...
So we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna wait, we're gonna go up?
The longer we wait, the longer everything is on hold, and then the people who are doing the work don't know if they're doing it. So right now, we were noticing it with ordering splash pads. If we order it right now, we can get it in six weeks. If we order it in two weeks, we're gonna wait 10 months. 10 weeks, 10 weeks, I mean. So everything is like, not only does the money possibly go up, but the timeline of things go up. I mean, I, we have subway manholes that are failing, and we didn't fix them last year because we didn't have enough money to fix them. It's just more time that things appear to be neglected when this isn't put into place. And, and does that in part mean that it's more expensive to fix it later? Yes. Yes.
Everything's going up, guys.
Well, but it's more expensive. The more broken something is, the more it costs to fix it.
Plus, what Steph's saying is, it is true. The later in the season you order it, the more people charge you. Because that's when all the latecomers come to the construction company. So if you have a company, and I ordered your job in April, right? I'm gonna charge you one rate, but if I need you in July...
Now, it's, they already have their schedule in place. Right. So it's hard. It's, it's a long waiting game. We have people hurry up to get us quotes so we can present this information. And the longer we wait, the longer they're doing us a favor to hold that. Right. And their time and their schedule available. And I think everyone has noticed that we're getting the same three to five bidders on everything, so...
So I, I am comfortable voting for this tonight, but I would also really like it if Ms. Maughart could provide us with that.
It's been a nice spreadsheet.
And she, she said it would be fun.
It is.
So she's not gonna charge, she's not gonna charge the city for that time, I'm sure.
Any, any other additional questions we got for... All right, I'd just like to ask my council if there's any, if there's, it needs to be unanimous, if there's any council members that don't feel comfortable with it, please voice their opinion now.
I got 20 minutes to think about it.
You want 20? Then we'll talk, okay.
That's what I want to do.
All right, thank you very mu, oh, go ahead Frankie, go ahead.
I gotta, I gotta ask Marcus a question.
Absolutely.
But on my mind, as I put it on my phone, my little notes, I know we had some issues regarding a couple of the convenience stores selling illegal cigarettes and all that good stuff. I know we're off the subject, but I, I wanted to do it on camera, I wanted to do it in front of everybody here. That's why I didn't wanna call you personally. What happened to the stores or the owners or whatever? What took place when they were selling the illegal products? Unstamped cigarettes and whatever else? What is the punishment? Are we gonna close them down? What's the punishment?
Which, so it's ultimately not up to me. They're entitled to a hearing by the law that you guys passed. It's each, each violation, depending on what it was and who it was, is worth a certain amount of points. We charged that, we work with the police, we work with Corporation Council, and then we decide if we have enough that they did to call them in. So those, what you're talking about is police issues. So those are, the chief, the chief scores them, puts them in the chart, we go through. Do they have enough points to be violated? We think they do, we go to legal and call for a hearing to pull their license. I ultimately pulled the license.
We haven't done that yet, they're still operating.
Well, we've, we've put them, we've, we've put them in process. I don't want you to think we're not doing anything, me and the chief.
So they're on notice?
They're, they're on notice, and we're trying to put together, it's like a nuisance abatement. We're trying to put together a case to get them, you know?
But they are operating right now?
They're operating right now.
Hopefully legally.
Hopefully legally, right?
All right.
And then sometimes it complicates...
Rome had the same issue, Rome recently too, they're selling these unstamped...
And sometimes it complicates things, Steph could talk to this more than I do. Sometimes it comp, comp, complicates things because we gotta make sure that we're in our jurisdiction. So if it's a, if it's a federal or an ATF or a state violation, and it's not a local law violation, then we don't have jurisdiction to police that. So we're trying to build cases.
All right, that's it.
How long does it take, Marcus, to get, from the beginning to the end?
Well, it just started, so...
I know, it's gonna be like five years.
No, 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 no.
It's gonna be like six months?
Six months.
So, you have the floor, you have a little piece of business.
Ken, I was hoping that tonight we could settle on the council's summer schedule. We usually cancel one meeting in July and one in August. I would just like to be able to make my summer plans. So I was hoping that we could come to some agreement tonight.
We don't have one of our...
We don't have a full, is it possible you can wait for the next council meeting?
Yeah, yes. But could everybody come to the next council meeting with their calendars?
Yes.
Can I have the floor for a second?
Of course, Mr. President.
We don't have to decide now without her in our presence, but can we float the dates right now since everyone's in the room? We can legally talk about it, right?
Not congenial, we'll move from there.
Yeah, so, right now, the first meeting would be July 5th, which is obviously not favorable.
Not with the 4th to July.
Exactly. And then in August, the first meeting would have been August 2nd. So typically, we would either move to the 9th, but August is one of those five Wednesday months, so...
When's the next meeting in August?
Well, so here's my point. August, the meetings would have been 2 and 16.
Okay.
Okay? So in August, if you split August right in half, the third Wednesday would be the middle of August. That would be August 16th, okay? And then in July, that's typical, four Wednesdays, we usually try to split the difference for URA and everything. We could do the 12th, which is the following Wednesday in between the two meetings.
We could do the 19th.
Either or, yeah.
19th and 16th have a, are nicely...
19th and 12th, you mean the Aug, yeah.
July 19th and then August 16th.
Yeah, you're right about that. You're right about that. Because then at least there'd be a cadence of weeks in between.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
I go away the first week. I go away the first week in August, so whatever you guys do.
July 19th and August 16th.
So July 19th and August 16th.
So why don't we do this since we're kind of coming together? Well, just one second. Why don't we propose those dates kind of loosely, depending on what comes out? Then we could also talk to Brian, URA, make sure it all works out, and then the next meeting we can...
How about our clerk post it? Get an email out, and if there's any questions, go from there? Frankie, was that your idea?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I took it.
What was, what was your idea, Frank?
Just have the clerk post it.
Make sure she's checking with some department ads if they are gonna be available. And then you'll post it, and we, we all have to respond.
Right.
Yea or nay.
Right. So July 19th, August 16th, what we're proposing.
I've got 7, 19, 16.
Thank you, everybody, for your consideration.
Okay, any other business? Okay, pre-calc meeting is now closed. We'll be meeting back at 7:00. Thank you.
Okay, today's May 17th, 7:02. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aiello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice Williamson, De Brango, Gleamy, present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council. Pledge allegiance with the flag of the United States of America. The republic of which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First order of business this evening will be the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have any motions from the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes, please, Mr. President.
There's a second from Miola. Any opposed to accepting and waiving the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting? No one's opposed? Minutes have been posted to ECO 360 for council and the public to review. We do not have a public hearing this evening on any properties or pieces of legislation, so we're moving on to public comment period, to which we only have one speaker signed up this evening. Anthony Testa, can you please come forward? The common council provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and you may begin.
Anthony Testa. I just wanted to make a quick, a couple announcements, really quick, pertaining to community. Just first off, I'd like to thank everybody who had attended our one-year anniversary celebration and Meet the Candidates Forum. We had a great attendance, great crowd, and we were very thankful for that. Now, Snug will be having a pop-up barbecue that'll be on Friday. The time, I believe, is from 3:00 to 8:00. They had moved their date from Saturday because of the weather. We will also be, as West Utica Neighborhood Association, meeting to clean the parks in West Utica. We will be meeting at Lincoln Park, and then we will be navigating to Addison Miller as the time allows. We will also be in the Memorial Day Parade. If anybody's interested, please reach us at westuticanNeighborhood, again, westuticanneighbourhood@gmail.com. And our Meet the Candidates Forum for Mayor, which all four candidates have confirmed their attendance, that is June 14th. Again, that is June 14th, so if anybody would like to attend that. I would also like to thank many of the members of the council and personnel and community members for supporting us in our mission of making West Utica Neighborhood Association a success. And the West Side is the best side. Thank you.
Thank you. Close this public comment period. We have no guests this evening. We also have no communications. Reports from the city officers. Fire Department.
Early busy weekend. We had a couple fires. Got to give a quick recognition to Officer White from UPD for finding a fire at P-13 Waverly Place and calling it in, notifying us that there was a fire. He was able to get the people out of the house and move their car out of the driveway where the car burned up as well, so congratulations.
I'll certainly pass that along. Thank you very much.
Great job, Officer White, for that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Corporation Council.
Nothing to report.
Codes?
I want to remind everybody that the end of next week is the last time for you to put out your green waste, if you're a resident of the city of Utica. And if we have to take your green waste off the curb after that, we will charge you. So people are surprised by that, but that's what the law is, and we've enforced it strictly the last two years. Now, that doesn't mean, and me and Stephanie are working on going around to some key places in our city, that doesn't mean that you can put it in streams and creeks because that stuff causes flooding and there's overages. So we got special literature, we're gonna go to those places. Please keep green waste out of streams and creeks because we can enforce those laws too. And I think that's it.
All right. UPD?
Nothing to report.
Sewer Department?
Nothing to report.
Engineering, gotta give her engineering.
Engineering. All right, thank you very much, and your attendance is appreciated. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First District, Councilperson Aliyah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Second District, Councilperson Burmaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Anthony and Amy for the work they've been doing in West Utica. Anthony, he failed to mention, they're gonna have a truck at Addison Miller on the 8th of June, and you know, your support would be great, but again, thank you too for the work you do in West Utica. I appreciate it, and I know the residents appreciate it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Third District, Councilperson Fred.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate Mr. Joe Hobike for winning reelection to the school board and Mr. Jason Cooper for winning election to the school board. And mostly, I want to commend the people of Utica who turned out in record numbers to vote in this year's school board election. It was, there were good vote numbers last year, and this year, even more people voted. So that's always nice to see that trend going in that direction. So, and that's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fourth District, the Majority Leader, Councilperson Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just like to thank all the individuals who made the Wash Bush Road new playground what it is today. It's also handicapped accessible. Had the, it was a great time to see the mayor go down the slide. He did get his suit pretty dirty because I don't think they cleaned the slide before he went down it, but I think he should have checked that first. But I also, please, many thanks to Mayor Palmieri, Brian Thomas, David Short, Derek, and the famous Marcus Phillips. With all these guys working together, we wouldn't have got it done. And those of us who are like young children, please bring it to them. I think it brings, I was trying bars, but I slipped a little bit on a couple of them, but have a good time there. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fifth District. Councilperson Venice Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Sixth District, Councilperson Joe Beatrice.
Yes, I just wanted to say to Mr. Testa, he may say the West Side's the best, but I think the Six Ward is the best, so that's what I got to say. But speaking on that, on this coming Monday, 5:22, I will be at my normal, I have office hours with, along with the county legislator, at 5:00 to 6:30. And at 6:30 will be the North Utica Neighborhood Meeting, which will be a mayor candidate forum, and, excuse me, I believe everybody has committed to being there, so feel free to join us, and I look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman-at-Large and Minority Leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. History Center having a telethon today, and so I'm not sure if it's still going on, but just like we did the animal shelter, let's do the same thing with the History Center. All I have to say, thank you.
Very good. Council-at-Large, President Protemp, De Brango, you have the floor.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Legislation that was discussed in pre-meeting conference. First piece we have this evening, which is sponsored by Councilmember Miola, is ordinance number one, ordinance amending composition of the Bureau of Fire.
Mr. President, we would have to wait, we would have to reconsider this, Mr. President. It's an old legislation. It was last, it was last meeting's legislation.
So would you like to reconsider and then amend?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Any opposed to reconsidering the ordinance amending composition of the Bureau of Fire from previous meeting? No one's opposed. It's on the floor. You can make the amendment.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to amend to have the ordinance shall take effect, the last line, June 1st, 2023.
The council attorney would like to address the council. There is a motion live on the floor, by the way.
I would like to say that when we did this last meeting, we inadvertently, and I will take the blame for that, you can't have two ordinances come effect on the same date because we don't have timestamps and all that, so you don't know which one succeeds the other. So that being the case, when the mayor saw that, and I forgot that we did that, I said, we'll just bring it back, and the previous order of number three, which is 124, has to be first, and will come effective first, and the other one, number four, which is 132, I believe, will be effective July 1st. And so we corrected that little error, and it is in keeping what your feelings anyway. So we're just making a little correction, and I apologize. We had to bring it back to just for that purpose only, but you know, we were passing around so many things that night that that sort of got lost in the shuffle for that.
Can I ask a question? On that legislation... Actually, just hang on. Is there a second to the motion? All right, Councilperson Brenna had that.
Stephanie needs to chime in.
The only thing I was gonna say is there's just an error in the, it says June 1st.
Yes, it's a little...
It says first this.
Yes, first this.
Yeah.
We can correct that.
So, any opposed to the amendment? Anyone? Okay. So this legislation is amended, reads be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect June 1st, 2023. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Mr. President, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
So on the, when we did this on the last meeting, who sponsored that legislation? Was that Councilperson Colosimo?
Uh, yeah.
So can she be added to this?
We reconsidered what was already done, so I think Councilperson Miola just had that in the packet to bring it to our attention. So no one really sponsors a reconsideration.
Okay.
There was a motion and a second to reconsider. You all voted to reconsider, you did. So it doesn't change what was done in the first meeting. It's not like the sponsorship changed from the first meeting. Yeah. All right. Resolution two, authorizing the sale of wine and beer to FX Matt Brewing Company.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Full council on them, so I do have a question. Did everyone just, usually it's just minority leader and majority leader?
I think because it's such a good party time, I think all the councilors are joining.
All right, all right. Sounds, sounds good. All right, so who's moving this one?
Yes. Mr. President?
Okay. Second from Aiello. This is authorizing the sale of wine and beer to FX Matt Brewing Company. It's a resolution. This name of sponsor is FX Matt Brewing. Name of event is the Boiler Raker Party. Date of the event is Sunday, July 9th, 2023, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and the location is 811 Edward Street. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Resolution number two, uh, three. Okay. This is an authorization of sale of wine and beer. This is same sponsor FX Matt Brewing. Name of the event is Remain In Light 2023 U.S. Tour. Date, Saturday, June 24th, from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Again, 811 Edward Street. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Resolution four. Okay. Friend and Miola. This is another authorization of the sale of wine and beer to FX Matt Brewing Company. Name of the event is Collective Soul Concert, Friday, August 18th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Same address, 811 Edward. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Mo is spelled wrong on this next piece of legislation. Is that how we... Be sure. Be sure. All right. Well, let's go for it. All right, authorization of sale of wine and beer to FX Matt Brewing Company. Motion? Second? I'm gonna give that one to De Brango, I heard him. Friday, June 9th, Saturday, June 10th, 2023, 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Resolution six. Miola?
It's, it's concert time.
All right, game of event, Humphries McGee, Saturday, August 19th, 2023, 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., 811 Edward Street. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
The next piece is sponsored by Councilmember Burmaster. Is there a second? Friend is the second. This is calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1,006 Wager Street. It's a sum of $25,000 to the URA from Dariana Marte. June 7th, 7:00 p.m. will be the public hearing, if it's voted on.
Eight yeas adopted.
Thank you. Ordinance eight is the...
Motion to refer to committee.
Second.
All right, any opposed? It's in committee. Calling for a public hearing on 637 Plant Street. This is sponsored by Aiello. Is there a second? All right. This is Cara Nagui, sum of $40,000 to URA. Again, June 7th, 7:00 p.m. is the public hearing. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Ordinance number 10 is the paired sale, it's the ordinance.
Motion to commit, please.
Second from Burmaster. Any opposed? It's in committee. Next piece is calling for a public hearing of the sale of 1215 Miller Street to Cho Da Lindia for $250 to the URA. Second, Aiello. This was sponsored by Councilmember Irvin. Your votes? Again, the public hearing is June 7th, 7:00 p.m.
Eight yeas adopted.
Motion to commit, ordinance number 12, Mr. President.
Okay, any opposed? It's in. Okay, ordinance number 13 is a bond ordinance. This is moved, well, this needs a sponsor. It's put into our packet by the minority majority leader coming down from the budget director in the administration. Miola is moving it. Second from Friend. This is a bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of nine, $9.7 million of serial bonds of the city of Utica, Oneida County, New York, to finance the cost of various capital projects. Let's see here, I'm gonna read the last piece.
The outline be easier.
While you're doing it, I...
Absolutely.
I passed out, I couldn't find the 2013 bond, which is the oldest bond we have out there, it was refunding, but I did find 14 and 15 and 17. And something occurred to me when I printed these out and put them in front of you. In 2014, we were borrowing for legal judgments. We were borrowing for demolition of municipal-owned buildings. In 2017 or '15, we were doing the same thing. We were borrowing for municipally-owned, take buildings down, add cricks and ravines. And I think it's pretty gosh darn great that we don't have to borrow for legal judgments anymore, and we don't have to borrow to demolish our own buildings anymore. And we, okay, we're borrowing a little bit for stormwater, but we're paying as you go for a good chunk of it. And I'm pretty proud of all that, and I didn't until I saw this, so just wonderful.
Wonderful job, as usual, Heather. Wonderful job.
Well, it's not me, it's really the mayor who has done a great job with these budgets, and my predecessor, Peter.
Yes. God bless his soul.
I'd just like to add that it's Heather.
All right, so now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Utica, Oneida County, New York as follows. Section one, the city of Utica, Oneida County, New York, the city is hereby authorized to undertake the various capital projects described below at an aggregate estimated maximum cost of $9,795,588, the estimated maximum cost of each project being as follows. This was gone, we went over this in pre-meeting conference, and it's been distributed to the council. So I'm not going to list all of the projects, however, I will summarize. Machiner and apparatus, which includes front end loaders, Jacobson mowers, claw trucks, parking garage tractors, parking garage plows, two trailers, firefighting apparatus and vehicles, building alterations, traffic signals, signal systems, et cetera. We also have bonding for electric subway manhole, mobile band shell, reconstruction improvement of city-owned parking garages, et cetera. There are sewer systems, surface drainage improvements, highway roads and streets, passenger vehicle for CID hybrid vehicles, police utility interceptors, et cetera, parking meters, building improvements and reconstruction. This ordinance is not subject to a mandatory or permissive referendum. This ordinance, which takes effect immediately, shall be published in full or summary form in the Observer Dispatch, the official newspaper, together with a notice of the city clerk in substantially the form provided in Section 81 Local Finance Law. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Okay, moving on to E&amp;A transfers. Proposed ordinance number 14.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Okay, I'd like to also note that at E&amp;A, we discussed the year of the ordinances as they were coming, and you'll see that they're all noted and annotated with the proper fiscal year as presented to the council. Would someone like to second this?
Right.
All right, Friend had that one. This is an ordinance to adjust for unexpected overtime, increase in gas prices, additional attendance at training academy, and purchase of hydrant tools. This is all within the fire budget area. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Ordinance number 15, another 2022-2023 fiscal year E&amp;A transfer. Adjust for unexpected employment attrition and repairs to lawn mowers.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Second from Burmaster. This is from Parks Maintenance Contractual and Auto Materials, going into Parks Maintenance seasonal employment and repairs. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Proposed ordinance 16 to adjust for unexpected wage increase due to contract settlement, purchase of V-blades, and unexpected salt usage.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Second from Friend. This is from Parks Maintenance, Off-Street Parking, Traffic Control and Infrastructure, going into street cleaning, various lines, and this again is 2223. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Ordinance 17?
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Wait a second. Okay, gonna go with Burmaster on that one. This is to adjust for unexpected contract settlement, increase in gas usage, and repairs to F-350 and F-350, that was in an accident, as described in our caucus. This is all within the TBW Cost Center. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Resolution number 18 is another authorization of sale of wine and beer to St. Anthony's and St. Agnes Church.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Wait a second. Friend is the second. The name of the sponsor is St. Anthony and St. Agnes Church. Name of the event, St. Anthony Festival. Date of the event is Friday, June 9th, 5:00 to 10:00, Saturday, June 10th, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. 4:22 till now. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Next piece is sponsored by Councilmember Testa.
Full council on that one, Mr. President, request?
Thank you. I would, since she's not here, I would like a mo- Thank you, I would, since she's not here, I would like a motion to move this piece.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Okay. You guys got that?
Yep.
And it's full council. I'm going to read this. Proclamation honoring the contributions of Father Joseph Salerno. Whereas born June 2nd, 1948, Father Joseph Salerno has been a staple in the Catholic faith for the people of Utica since 1991. With his retirement from full-time ministry July 1st, 2023, the common council of the city of Utica hereby honors the life and contributions of Father Salerno. And whereas Father Joe was ordained a priest in the diocese of Syracuse 43 years ago, and has served in several different parishes, including St. Anthony's of Endicott, St. Mary of the Assumption in Binghamton, St. Joseph's of Lee Center, St. Mary of Mount Carmel in Utica, and Our Lady of Lords in Utica. And whereas truly embodying the role of a servant, Father Joe has taken his passion for helping others outside the four walls of the church building. He has served on boards for Notre Dame schools, Catholic charities, Hope House, and the former St. Joseph's Nursing Home, just to name a few. Father Salerno is presently the chaplain for the Utica Police and Fire Departments, and will continue to serve after his retirement. And whereas in his time not spent in service to others, Father Joe enjoys music, reading, theater, running the boilermaker, and indulging in his favorite dessert, ice cream. Giving Father Salerno's affinity for loving the poor in spirit, he is also a diehard Buffalo Bills fan. And now be it resolved that the city of Utica does hereby recognize and thank Father Joe Salerno for his many years spent in service to the people of Utica. Further resolved, that this tribute will forever be a part of the minutes of a meeting of the Utica Common Council held on the 17th day of May, 2023. Your votes.
Eight yeas, adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Before that, I'd like to just note that we do have one piece in committee, which, I'm not saying we need to pull it out, but it's the designation of the official newspaper. There was many asks about budget, et cetera. We did gather a lot of that information from urban renewal, the IDA, et cetera. The only people we did not, or the only board I can see we didn't get a specific answer from as of yet, is contract and supply, but we did pull the overall advertising numbers from the budget, and that is for the council to review in between now and the next meeting if they so choose to do so.
Mr. President, please check with our budget director to find the ample funds for, to move this forward.
If, if, in what case?
I'm assuming that it's going to be a half a year, possibly $10,000 cost for the city, so we're, we didn't allocate that money yet for the...
If, if we were to do both, you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Motion to close, second.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.